Hi, everybody. This meetings of the Bridgewater zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members or the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded. Within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or other town's social media pages. The following members of the zoning Board of Appeal are participating remotely. My name is Brian Heath, Chairman. We have Jerry Chipman, Vice Chairman, and Anna Klimas, Member. During the meeting, all votes of the Board will be taken as a roll call vote. Following town staff members are also attending. Jennifer Burke, Community Economic Development Director, Steve Solari, Building Commissioner, and Nicole Salvo, the Executive Assistant. At this time, everybody's mic is muted. The Board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as it appears, as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your questions by listing your name and address and your question. The Chairman will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the Chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before making any, asking your question. And if you're on the phone, you can dial *9 to use the Raise Your Hand feature. This time, we're going to call the zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. We have two items on our agenda. The first item before the Board tonight is a variance request by the owners of 31 Perkins Street. Larry, I'm assuming you're going to be representing?
Yes.
Okay. And is Anna with us?
Yes, she joins.
Okay. Okay, Larry, we've looked at everything. We've read through it. As you know, the Board members have all read through it. If you want to give a quick summary, or if there's anything new that you want to bring to our attention, how about it?
Okay. Larry Silver from Silver Engineering Associates. You're probably all familiar with the site. This was the Walkover Shoe site. It's got a long history, 100 years of industrial use. The site is primarily impervious. It's got a lot of building and some parking in other areas, but not a lot. It was mostly building. It's a, so when we, once store space, my client started operating in there, they, they obviously wanted to make the building better. They've gone to the planning board. We got a special permit in order to plan the existing use by basically making the building better, take down the two-story section near the tracks, make it four-story, make it look nice. Okay? And so it's not going to look like that old wood structure that's there now. It's going to look very nice. So then the next step is to deal with getting site plan approval. And also during that process, we also were, had to address the parking issue. And the parking issue is really that our zoning bylaws do not address the specific use. They have uses for retail, they have other office, they have warehousing, but they don't deal with self-storage. So Steve Solari's, he's on the line on this meeting. And so we had to reach out to him to say, well, how do we handle this here? And because he didn't have a category to put it in, he indicated that we would need to come before you for variance for parking. He equated it to warehousing, but I would contest that this is not really warehousing in the sense that way the zoning bylaws are set up. So in my research, I tried to find both store space in these types of facilities, controlled climate facilities, how much parking do they really need? And as you saw in the package I provided you, that this is, a lot of this is inertia. People bring in stuff, it stays in spaces, and there's very little activity coming in and out on a daily basis. I gave you examples of other locations they had, and they had very few spaces in any one of those locations. And I also gave you some information about zoning bylaws that I could find elsewhere in the country, and how they, once it did do, deal with self-storage, how they actually dealt with it. And the ones that did deal with it, dealt with it by how many space, a one space per certain number of rental units in a self-storage. And some of them I included, one was 50, every 50, another was every 100, another was every 200. So conservatively, with one every 50, which was the one that was more stringent, that would require us to have, I believe it was like 20 spaces between off, between the office rental area and also for the, for the other units for coming in. So there's, basically the way the site lays out is that there's a loading door in the front, and there's one on the far left side next to Pearl Street. And then there's also other doors on the building, but those are the primary ones that, for activity, and the office is right in the front, where they're going to knock down a section of the building, and they're going to reconfigure it in there to make it a little bit smaller. So figuring how many, this is the layout that we were able to come up with. We feel that the number of spaces that we show here, which are 20, 20 spaces plus five live spaces. And the reason why I say live spaces is that the area that's behind the building on the right side in the back is part of an access easement, and that access easement only allows for live parking, does not allow for stationary parking, but we don't need them anyway. But, but there's, so there's five shown there, and there's a total of 25 overall, 20, 20 regular spaces and the five live. And so what we're asking for is for the Board to grant a variance or to say that the parking in this category is adequate for the intended use because your zoning bylaws don't have a category for self-storage. That's pretty, that's really summarizing a lot of what I gave you in the package, and I'd be glad to answer whatever questions you might have.
Jerry or Anna, do either of you have any questions regarding the proposal or request as submitted?
I don't. It's, I've looked through it, and it seems pretty straightforward, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
My only question is, Larry, how long have you been in business? One of the attachments was from 1996.
How long, who been in business?
You.
Me?
Yes.
1988.
There you go. Wow. Okay. That's my only question.
I'm an old geezer.
I didn't say that. I just saw the attachment. One of the attachments was from, I have also reviewed all the attachments. One of them dated 1996, and I was just struck by how long you've been in business.
Yeah. And actually, I did a lot of self-storage buildings back in the 1980s for extra space storage out of Utah. And they're, they're one of the biggest market share companies in this business, and I did them all across the country for them.
Well, I think based upon looking at everything that was filed, understanding the building and that the points made of self-storage, you're really not, it's not long-term parking, it's people going in and out, that I'd agree that, you know, we could grant, based, without substantial detriment to the public good, that the variance potentially can be granted, and that giving to the, the structure and the location and the land that, you know, it's almost impossible to get new spaces within there. And again, self-storage is, again, typically a low-impact usage for parking. So at this time, I would ask either Anna or Jerry if you would care to make a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wait. This is, this is a public hearing. Yeah, sorry. My bad. So at this time, unless Jerry or Anna have any additional questions, this is public hearing. We're going to open it up to questions for anybody in the audience. Again, if, if you do have a question, just please state your name and address, and then go into your question, if you would, please. Do we have anybody?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised, and nobody is in my chat this time.
Okay. Give them a few more seconds in case they're just having technical difficulties and...
Still not, oh, just, yeah, we do have one person. Hold on, let me. Jason Hoffman should be able to unmute himself now.
I, I didn't know if I had to type it or not. My question was, has the planning board, how does this line up with the master plan of the town? Has they, have they seen this proposition, or is it not their turn yet?
They have, but Jason, if you would, if you could just, for the record, if you could just state your name and address, and then...
I'm sorry. It's Jason Hoffman, 173 Center Street.
Okay, thank you. Larry, you, you've already gone to the planning board.
We've been to, we've been to the planning board once in order to get a special permit for us to extend or modify the existing permit, and that was approved for this use. And then we are now, we just had our first site plan approval meeting last week, I believe it was, and there were a number of small comments for us to address, to come back to be able to get an approval at the next meeting, hopefully.
Thank you, Larry. I was, I'm sorry, I've often wondered what that building would turn out to be. That was my only, I know the master plan committee has a whole plan for downtown, so I just, I was curious. That's all. Thank you.
I don't know if Rebecca or if you could put up the, what it looks like, what the facade will look like. If you could put that up, it might be helpful to see, that that's how it will look when it's completed, you won't see that old ugly building anymore.
Don't see anybody else.
Okay, if there's no additional questions from the public, I'd make a motion to close the public comment section.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Having heard, read the file, heard from the applicant's representative and gotten comments, I'd move to have either Jerry or Anna make a motion on either accepting or granting the variance or not.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to grant the variance under Section 11.23 based on the information that's provided to us and the landscape of the, the, the area would grant the variance.
Have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Variance is granted, Larry.
All right.
For us, you're good to go.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and hopefully you'll appreciate the changes that will occur on that corner. It'll look nice.
I have to go. Larry, I just want you to know, I have to go to the next town over now to return my bottles, but that's okay.
I'll work on that one. I'll see you. Good night now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, yes, sir.
If I could, on this next item, I originally was the applicant for the 40B approval and just recently sold the property, and so the new owner is trying to get organized. So I am going to recuse myself from this meeting as I believe it could appear to be in conflict. I won't be returning to the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
But to break, before, before you leave, Jerry, don't we have other business that he has to?
Yeah. You can stay in the meeting, you just can't vote on it, Jerry. We have the minutes and some other matters to take up at the end, if you would. Mine, wouldn't mind.
Jennifer, can we put him in a breakout room? I mean, I don't know what the...
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just move him to the waiting room until we're ready for him.
Okay. So, and so the applicant for this is?
Representative is Mr. Freeman?
Yes, I'm there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Rita Freeman, for the record, representing the applicant. And I believe, either by phone or Zoom, the purchaser is also present, Mr. Alton Beach. In a nutshell, this is a simple request for an extension of the comprehensive permit. The most recent extension was through January 1st of this year, 2022. We sent our request in, I forget the date, but December 3rd or 4th. And under the regulations, as long as the request to extend is made before the expiration, it is still, you know, something that you can do. So the permit has not expired yet unless you disapprove the change, rather, the extension. I should point out that the way it works under the regulations is, we have sent in a notice of progress that requests your approval of the extension for one year by finding it to be an insubstantial change. And the regulations, which I cited specifically cite an extension as being something which is typically, typically considered an insubstantial change. So if you were determined that it's more than substantial, you wouldn't actually be denying it tonight. You would be making the determination of the request being substantial, and then you would have to schedule a public hearing with notice to rebutters. So naturally, you can still ask questions, and, and naturally, we'll respond. But in a nutshell, that's the process that we're before you for at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Freeman, we have granted an extension, at least one, and I can think we may have done two.
Yeah, there are more.
What? Yeah. You know, the, the project was approved originally, but what is your client's plan in relation to getting this project going? It's...
He has gone ahead and purchased it, and, you know, that means he has from his own investment group, which is Brunswick Beach Investment Group, LLC. And he's developed affordable housing before, so he's ready to proceed. We do have to talk to Mass Housing to get their so-called final approval under other aspects of the 40B regulations, but that is not really a lengthy process, a couple of months maybe. You know, since you asked, he may be contemplating some minor changes, I think perhaps, and when it's not before you tonight. But since you asked, if, if we do get the extension, he will come back quite quickly with me to ask you, I think it's being contemplated, to keep the project the same except to allow three-bedroom units instead of two-bedroom units. So he really is raring to go, and he wouldn't have purchased the property, you know, without being ready to go. And I do understand the delay. That's certainly something you absolutely have the right to take into account. You know, in the past, there were various reasons for delay, and probably the previous owner, the, the name of the group was the, I forget the name of the road, Aldrich. It doesn't matter, but in any case, with the COVID, everything has been slowed down. He'd been looking for a developer to, you know, come in and really do it, because he felt that he couldn't. And, you know, COVID naturally, over the last two years, really slowed everything down. But now, Mr. Beach is raring to go.
Okay. Anna, do you have any particular questions?
When did Mr. Beach purchase this property?
It was, I believe, the middle of December, roughly. I believe it was either the beginning or, I think I may have the deed on my computer that I conveniently have up here. Let me pull that up. I'm not finding it real quickly, but I know I was contacted roughly, you know, the, the middle or end of November. So it was in that time frame. I think it was right after Thanksgiving, the beginning of December. So it's about, you know, a month or two at this point.
Okay. Seeing where's this public meeting? If you don't have any more, Anna, I'm going to open it up to public question, comments.
We did receive a comment letter in writing. I don't know if you want that right into the record.
Yeah, hold on. Where is that? So we did get Nicole. So there was a, yes, a letter from Judith Serlinger Laga. It's, hold one second. This computer screen is just too small. Hello, I'm concerned about the matter above. There are many concerns that I have, and my neighbors have presently and had in the past with this development. There were hearings on this matter years ago, and the same owner in X select Mr. Chipman. Project was not done, and now it appears that Mr. Chipman is back with his project. The property and the project has been transferred to a new group, Mr. Chipman being one of the two members mentioned. It has been 10 years since the last permit was granted. As noted in the letter, an attorney filed for an extension at the end of the 10 years. My concerns are, what changes have occurred in the past history of sale and purchase of the property, and it would affect, as it would affect the proposal, proposed development? Time span of 10 years gives me pause to what changes this plan will involve. Recently, an old home was sold at the corner of the property of eight Aldrich, or six Aldrich Road. It is of significant historic value, built in 1740, and especially owned, oh, excuse me, and originally owned by S. Perkins. It may be part of the new plan to build this development. We are not, we don't know. As neighbors, we have never been informed of any plans, nor, no one has reached out to involve us. This is a delicate neighborhood. Center Street is a very heavily traveled and dangerous. There are two schools on the street, used extensively for police traffic due to the station situated at the end, at the foot of our street. St. Thomas Aquinas Church is also on our street, as well as many private homes, both rental and owned. Our street is used as a cut-through for all kinds of traffic that otherwise would need to travel through the center of Bridgewater. Recently, next door to me, a boarding house was established, which was brought, brought into its own challenge to our neighborhood. Apologize, this is kind of small print. We would want any development project that would occur here on Center Street and Aldrich to be transparent and look for community input in order that the character and small neighborhood quality of life could continue for everyone. We are not opposed to development, we just want it done well and thoughtfully. Please consider not extending this permit without further information and open communication from the developers. The people who live on this street and the surrounding area, and in the town itself, would appreciate the opportunity to keep our neighborhood... I can't read that. And pleasant...
It says neighborhood livable and pleasant.
Livable, okay. Thank you sincerely, Judith Serlinger.
If there's nothing else from the public, then I'm certainly happy to comment now. And I certainly was aware of that letter. A few things, just briefly. One, I can assure Ms. Serlinger and the Board that my client, I will make sure of it, will meet with them before doing anything further on the project. If he makes those changes, he will discuss it. It wouldn't change really anything other than the bedroom, having one more bedroom perhaps, and he may not go forward, so it's going to be what was approved. Secondly, a consideration that's always before a zoning board, albeit this has been around for a long time, but the need for affordable housing is strong or anything. So, you know, it still would be beneficial to the town to help a few, you know, probably young families and working folks, perhaps even working at Town Hall, and the police and fire to have affordable homes available. So I just wanted to mention that, which I do think is appropriate for you to take into consideration. And thirdly, although all of this is certainly appropriate to talk about, but it's not actually before you, because all we're asking for is an extension. And as said, we certainly want to satisfy you and the neighbors, that we will work with them if there are any changes, and if not, we'll still show them the plans. As Ms. Serlinger said, it's been a very long time. We would show them the plan, the plans that have been approved, or any requests to modify slightly, even work up what often happens, what happens during construction, a construction management plan, and discuss that with them. So, you know, that's the approach that I take, and, you know, if my clients don't work with me, then very soon they're not my client. So I do, I do think Mr. Beach and his company would do a good job. Thank you.
Certainly. And, you know, in relation to the, one of the comments in the letter, understanding that, and I have no knowledge that the, your client was the person who purchased the old home, but if that be the case, as you point out, the plan was approved as it is, a granting of an extension would only apply to the plan as approved.
Correct. Absolutely.
We have two people with their hands raised, Mr. Chairman. Jason Hoffman first.
Again, if you would just state your name, address, and then ask your question, please.
Yes, sir. Jason Hoffman, 173 Center Street. I am a direct rebutter to that property, and we had been down this road several years back, as Mrs. Serlinger's letter suggested or revealed. And, you know, to go from two bedrooms to three-bedroom units, you know, that concept is nice. What I remember of that property, and one of the, the points that I brought up was the close proximity of each building just to fit eight buildings with 16 units, not each, but 16 units in total, just to fit eight buildings on that property, because it's really not as big, there's a lot of wetlands back there. To fit those eight buildings on there, some of those buildings were really close together. You know, I think 20 feet, if I remember correctly, was one of the numbers that, one of the dimensions that I remember. You know, it, it does not align with the best practices of the, what's that, the Fire Prevention Association or something? And so to go to three bedrooms, I guess I'm questioning how that would happen without increasing the footprint of each building. And if that's the case, I would consider that a pretty substantial change, because you would need more space to do that. So I'm interested in seeing, you know, what the, how that would play out in the reality of the project.
Understood. And, and I think as, as Mr. Freeman had stated, that any kind of changes, they would need to come back to the Board, and we would review and determine whether it's substantial or insubstantial. I would kind of agree with your comments, that either, if the footprint isn't going to expand, then you're making much smaller bedrooms and for the building as well. So we'll have to really cross that bridge when we get to it, but they would have to come back, and there would have to be a vote at that time in relation to how to proceed with that.
And if, if I may, the feedback is, we appreciate, what's not before you, but we appreciate that. And as I said, there's been no definite plan and no, no design changes on the drawing board yet, so I'm sure my client will take that to heart, and, you know, it may, as I said, excuse me, sorry. You know, partially, the thinking is that three bedrooms might be better for some families, but if it is too tight and all of that, then we may decide on our own that we just won't do it. So I do appreciate the comments. Excuse me, will I get a glass of water? I apologize.
Is there another question?
Any more questions? Any more questions, Jason?
Nothing for right now. I'm fine. Thank you.
We had a question from Rayo Jimian.
Yeah, Rayo Jimian, 221 Aldrich Road. I remember this project, I guess it is 10 years. It's been an awful long time. And it seems to me the fact that it has been so long, it's been up and down so many times that this whole project should start from scratch. In other words, should start with a whole full new plan. And in other words, deny this extension, start from scratch, public hearings and go through it. This, I'm totally against this idea of an extension for this particular plan. Thank you.
Jen, are there any, any other public comment?
I don't see anybody else.
If I may, just a brief, I suppose it could be used as a rebuttal, but I do understand. I appreciate the gentleman's comments. And there is discretion, although again, it would have to go through a public hearing if you find that it's more than substantial. You know, there's not much case law, but I can be totally candid about the case law. You know, typically two or three extensions, especially and no, no getting around the fact that it's a long time. But again, with the intervening factors of up and down economy and especially the last two years. Typically, two or three extensions are countenanced by the Housing Appeals Committee and the 40B regulations. That's not to say that it's a hard and fast rule, as I've already said, it is your discretion. But, you know, it seems with a, with a new developer, which is what Mr. Chipman had said during the last, I'm told I wasn't there as you know, but during the last hearing, I think a year or two ago for extension. In fact, the extension noted that, that he was trying actively to find a developer and it had been difficult. And then of course the COVID came. So, you know, I do think that that is a grounds and distinguishes, you know, from other situations where there'd been no effort to be made to develop or find another developer and, you know, where there were no intervening very catastrophic international, you know, events like the COVID. So, you know, so that, that's why we're here. We do think, we know that this would be the last one. I can understand that that would be, you know, appropriate. But, you know, I do respectfully think that there are good grounds to allow the extension.
Mr. Hoffman has his hand raised again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jason?
Do I have to state my name and address again?
Let's do it. You've already been on record, so I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you. So I just want to add to Mr. Jamie's sentiment about how long this has been up and down and at what point do you stop being the dead horse? The, the project is complicated. They have to spend an immense amount of money and infrastructure to pump the waste out. At what point do you just say, this is not the property for that type of development? Just because the law says you can fit some buildings on there, which is a stretch of the law. At what point do you just say, this hasn't been happening, other developers don't want to get into it? There's, you know, there's always, this, I mean this lightly, but there's always the bigger fool mentality where eventually someone's going to bite. And here we are again, it's the same piece of property. It's the same plan. It's still complicated. It's even more costly, which is why someone would pitch three bedrooms instead of two, not for any other reason. At what point do we just decide that this is just not the right property for something like that? It's too dense. It was always too dense. It's beyond typical densities, I think of 40B, considering the location that it is, the shape and size of the lot, the amount of the, the amount of bending and breaking of rules in this town. At what point do you just say, this is just not the right, now's your opportunity? I guess is what I'm saying to, to say, this is not the right property for this. And we, maybe this shouldn't be happening. That's, just wanted to add to Mr. Jamie's sentiment on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Thank you. You know, I can say in response to that, that actually it's not in any way a greater number of units per acre than typical 40B projects. And in fact, in the last 10 years, you know, the, the guidelines, again, not regulations, but the policies and the encouragement by the various state agencies involved with housing encourage greater density. You know, in, in, in locations, not every location, but this seems to be an appropriate one again, and it's not greater density. The permit itself went through the, the analysis of that. Secondly, you know, denying an extension would only result, as, as one gentleman suggested, the previous speaker, it would only result in a new application that would be substantially the same. And, you know, all things being equal, and, you know, I've done, as some of you know, many, many, many 40B projects across the Commonwealth, you know, I, I, I I can't really see that there would be grounds at that time to not grant another comprehensive permit. So, you know, it would delay things. It wouldn't really give great benefit to the town. Extending it would achieve what everybody really wants. And as I said, you know, the answer to the question about when is, when is enough? I grant you that if, if Mr. Beach doesn't start and can't do it and comes back for another extension, I would candidly think at that point, unless there's a complete shutdown of, you know, the country, God forbid. But other than that, you know, I would agree at that point, you know, there is a point where you, you know, should say no. I just don't think that that point is reached yet for, since I've said.
Anna, do you have? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I, and I, you know, I certainly am not negotiating against myself, but given the concern about time, which I do understand, you know, it would probably be okay if you were more comfortable granting a six month extension. You know, he does have things lined up. You know, I, as I say, I'm told, I don't have direct knowledge, but, you know, I know the process. I know that we could achieve it. You know, in the next couple of months, two or three months, if you're more comfortable with a six month extension, then, you know, I would understand that and, you know, request you to do that.
Appreciate it. And just Jason, I think it was Jason, you guys made the comments. And as Mr. Freeman had stated, this did go through the process. Unfortunately, I wasn't on the board at the time. That was over 10 years ago. And it, I look at it as a an unfortunate event in relation to the 40Bs that the towns really have very limited jurisdiction in the sense of their bylaws in relation to these projects. You know, the state is, it's, it's a good public policy to have affordable housing, but sometimes they are, you look at them and it seems a little crazy. Understanding that, you know, COVID did, for the past two years, it's been a fog. We granted the, the extension. We understood that Mr. Chipman was actively, and I spoke to him on a few occasions, actively looking for someone to, to do it. He didn't have the wherewithal to, to do the project that was, as it was approved. And as Mr. Freeman said, you know, this, if, if the extension would be granted, and I'm a little more in favor of a six month, and it would be the last extension for this project because I somewhat agree, having been at this for a little bit, I'm by no extent a 40B expert, but, you know, the states, the extensions are somewhat common. You can, you can argue, the, the applicant can argue the 40B, I mean, excuse me, the, the timeframe in COVID and the difficulty in getting everything lined up helped or didn't help, but it resulted in the request for this extension and the project not moving forward. But Anna, I'm going to kick it over to you and see if you have any additional questions, comments, concerns?
As much as I hate to use the phrase unprecedented times, because I think it's overused during this time period. I do think that this is unprecedented times and it would seem like the perfect storm. When Mr. Chipman came before us, I remember him coming before us and both you and I, Mr. Chairman, were like, okay, let's do something here. When we did grant the extension, we were hesitant to grant the initial extension. And so I, at this point, would be inclined to do a six month extension, given the fact that it's unprecedented times, given the fact that the new owner, Mr. Beach, just recently purchased the property in December. And so that would be my initial thoughts.
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption, but I actually did pull up the date. It was November 15th, so I was wrong by a few weeks.
Oh, well, in that case I changed my mind.
I didn't think you would, but I wanted in fairness, make sure it was precise.
Thank you.
Jen, do we have any, any additional public comments?
Mr. Jimian has another question.
Sure, Ray?
Yeah, I just, you know, I understand that the, the 40B process that you're under the gun in some ways. I understand that there's a new owner and they want to build. But the bottom line in my mind is we're talking about a 10 year development that's gone nowhere. That plan should be looked at again, full public hearing, start from scratch. There's no reason why, in my mind, that you cannot start from scratch here. And I don't see a reason why you can, in terms of the town, you should start from scratch. Deny the extension, let the developer come back with a full set of plans, hold a public hearing and then go forward. If it fits what you think is proper, then by all means approve it. If not, then so be it. But you should start from scratch. I would be totally against this extension. Thank you.
In relation to coming back, the 40B regulations really haven't changed. If he came back with the same plan and it met the 40B 10 years ago, it's still going to meet 40B. It's just going to add more time expense. At, at the end of the day, you'd get the same result. It's, I can't defend it, but I'm just telling you the reality of it.
Mr. Hoffman has a question.
Not, not a question, just, you know, in prior meetings, I've heard Mr. Silva say that, you know, wetland lines are changing, you know, constantly. What that means from my perspective, I don't really know. I know it's just his intent of saying, making a comment like that was that, you know, you can measure wetland locations in one, at one point, and then, you know, five years later, you could go back and, and those same wetland areas could be different. So, you know, where the project is that old and those plans are that old, I mean, it, there is some validity to, to saying, hey, you know what, maybe we should take a fresh look at this thing again.
To that point, if there's not, if there's not an extension, which I don't know as to any wetlands permit, if there's not an extension, the point is well taken, but not for the, for the 40B aspect. They're still going to have to do a new delineation and comply and have it approved. And if it's expired, any order of conditions from Conservation Commission, they'd still have to go back and do that. So from that viewpoint, as I say, it's a valid point, but your concern will be addressed because new plans would have to be presented to Conservation Commission.
Yeah. I was going to say, is, they got the permit, but they still have to go through the whole process. And as Mr. Freeman said, if if any wetland delineations change whereby they would violate the initial grant, they would have to go and before the con commission, Concom and request some, I don't know what, what they would get a variance or what, but.
Well, I can, I'll just, just jump in on this. You're correct.
Going to go to you, Steve, at the beginning.
Yeah, that's what I basically want to say. On the permitting process, no matter what the plans were done 10 years ago, it's going to have to go back to Concom because they have to approve just as the ZBA approves the permit, the Concom approves the permit, water sewer approves the permit. So whatever was drawn 10 years as far as the, the way it works, there could be my minor changes based on, as the gentleman said, about changes in delineation of wetlands and changes to different items. So that will all be done through the permitting process as far as the building permit anyways.
Jen?
She don't have anything else. There's nobody else.
At this time, make a motion to close the public comment section of the meeting. Since you're the only one, Anna, it's just me and you.
I thought you said you made a motion.
No, no, I can't.
Yes, I'm sorry. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
At this time, I would make a motion to grant a six month extension. I think it is necessary and in the public interest to move forward with this extension, but it is to quote a country music song, your one last chance, one more last chance. So that's it. If it were to come before us again, I would not vote.
So can I just ask, so, because I want to put a date, so six months from today?
On the date?
Yes.
Yeah, because that would be the date.
The date of the last extension.
Yes, it, it, again, it, it, in fairness, it really could run from, from January 1st. Or, you know, because that was the date it expired. So that would, you know, cover gaps and not not leave vagueness, you know, and all of that. So that, and that would be fine.
Yeah. I was going to say is it would have to, if we had granted a one year extension, it would, it would go from January 1st through. So the six month is going to go from January.
July 1st.
July 1st, yes. And, you know, and I would say the, the requirement, well, they'd have to. Steve, whether they have to break ground, they have to do what?
They usually have to do a substantial and Jen can talk about it too, but usually have to do a substantial start to the project. Because I think a house has to be torn down for this project, if I'm not mistaken. Is there, is there a house being taken down?
From memory, from memory, yes, but I don't know, Mr. Beach, if you're listening or, or can speak, but I think that's correct.
Right. So if he started doing, getting prepping for road work, prepping for, you know, basically any structures, that would constitute, you know, the start, in my opinion. But there are some people that feel that the building permit being pulled is a stop, but I don't, and Jen might be able to know more on that. I think in a 40B, it's just start of the project.
That's correct.
Yeah, because I think we had the one up by Cumberland Farms that we used to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Freeman, as Xana's motioned, this is a six month extension. As far as extension, this is it, you know, if there isn't substantial movement on the project. As Anna mentioned, I also would be inclined not to grant a new extension. You'd have to refile. But due to the longevity of the COVID period, and I know that Mr. Chipman was looking for a developer. He's found one. It would be an approval to a six month extension.
Yeah, just for the formality, because I think you did have a motion, but still would need a second. And actually, under the emergency Zoom video remote legislation, I think you're supposed to actually poll the members and just ask them to, you know, call their name and state yea or nay. But unless I, I might have missed it. I apologize. If it was a second, if it was a second.
No, we, you can, Jen, as Anna and I are the only ones here, would I make the second on that?
Yeah, you can second it in that case. That's fair.
All right, then I would second the motion for the six month extension. All in favor?
Ryan, can I ask a procedural question before you vote?
Certainly.
Since you allowed, Mr. Freeman. You, you, you called, you called this a, I'm not sure what you call a type of hearing. Was this, was this advertised as a public hearing?
It was not. Under the regulations, it's not a public hearing. You're correct. Not specifically in the 40B regulations that I cited.
I was talking to Mr. Heath's, Mr. Freeman, please.
I know it's, it's, to their point, it's not. Because they're not coming for us for the project. It's, it's an extension of it.
Well, that's another thing that bothers me then. I think the, the residents of the area should have been notified of this. Thank you.
And Jen, on that? where residents necessarily had to be by regulation?
No, it's, no, the regulations don't require, it's not a public hearing. It's just a public meeting of the board. It's posted on the agenda appropriately. There was no requirement to notice any butters or anybody in the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. All right. With a second, again, I would, at this time, all in favor of granting the motion? Did you say aye?
I did. Yeah, I'm sorry, aye.
And I affirm as well, aye. The six month extension has been granted. Again, stated, it is the last extension. And in order to meet that, you need to do some substantial work in relation to moving forward with the project.
Yep. I certainly appreciate that. And I do understand. And thank you very much.
All right. Good luck.
Let me get Jerry back.
Okay. At, at this time, there are no longer, no more items on the agenda. So make a motion to close.
Just, well, just minutes if you want to approve them.
Right. I'm just going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We can go into board business in relation to the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Do we have anything else that we need to address, Jen?
I believe so. Nicole, we don't have anything else, correct?
I don't have anything else.
When is our next meeting? Your next scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight, but I don't believe there's anything on the, you don't have received any new applications, right?
Yeah, January 26th, so.
Yeah, we haven't received any new applications, so.
I'll double check tomorrow, Jennifer.
Yeah, so if we have, then we'll probably likely cancel that one.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion.
Business concluded. If anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.